We'll convene the Board of Equalization and Review at eight thirty a.m. Administrator's exclamation of the revaluation process by Tax Administrator Alan Lumpkin. That's at eight thirty. We'll recess the Board of Equalization and Review, and then we'll call to order the Board of Commissioners by Chairwoman Barbara Acock. We'll have the invocation by Commissioner Bevan Foster. Leg of Allegiance by Commissioner Joe C. Doherty. Approval of amendments for the April first, 2025 meeting. We do have one adjustment to the agenda, and that is to add a number item thirteen under consent, which is to cancel the April twenty-second public hearing for Project Istanbul and reschedule that meet, that public hearing for May the sixth at nine thirty a.m. And let's see, that's the only adjustment we have right now. We'll move into special presentations where we'll have our employees' anniversary pins. We'll have the introduction of new Department of Social Services Attorney Gay Stanley. Number seven is a motion to approve the 2025 National Volunteer Appreciation Week proclamation is presented by United Way Executive Director Sheri Archibald. Number eight is a motion to adopt resolution 2025 dash thirteen awarding the service weapon to Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver. And number nine is a motion to approve the 2025 Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation is presented by DSS Social Work Program Manager Samantha Nixon. Then we'll have an appointment committee. And then we move on to our consent agenda.
I got one question. So back on, back to number thirteen, that's, that, that's the one that takes the place of?
Project Istanbul.
That's the one we have next week.
Takes the place of April twenty-second.
So the one for next week, we won't have it on Tuesday.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we'll move on to budget amendments.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first budget amendment before you is number three fourteen, and this is for our finance department. We're actually requesting to anticipate and appropriate a reimbursement to the county from Team Foods for the payment of a Duke Energy Progress invoice for the elevation of power lines across from Lot Seven at Park East. Since we are the responsible property owner, we are required to make the payment, and we intend to receive reimbursement from Team Foods.
That was over and above the grant, correct?
That's correct.
Right, the difference.
Budget Amendment number three sixteen is Sheriff's Office. This is to record receipt of revenues for Controlled Substance Tax from the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Number three seventeen, this is for social services. This is to request additional funds needed for temporary health services. For translation services have increased because the number due, due to the number of specific demographic of clients. So there's three different contracts under this line, Propio, Vanguard, and Allegiance. This is for temporary help and telelanguage services. Number three twenty, this is to cover travel for social services for the remainder of the fiscal year. They do get reimbursement for this line item in the amount of fifty to sixty percent. And the final budget amendment is number three twenty-three from EMS. This is to reallocate funds in the amount of $24,000 to cover their lending services for the remainder of the year.
So we're still paying lending services to the hospital when they're?
They give us $50,000 a year to help towards that.
How much?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand.
They give us fifty, but we're still having to pay?
Yes, sir. It's over and above that amount.
How much over?
If memory serves me correctly, it's about twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
But we're eighty thousand is what it needs to be instead of fifty. Is that right?
If you want it to be, to break even, yes, sir.
So we need to go eighty to a hundred. So we need to make sure we've got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Number eleven is a motion to approve policy changes for the Wayne County Public Library as recommended by the Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors.
Yeah, I can, on page thirty-four, forgetting on page thirty-four of your packet, there's a summary of the proposed changes. I reviewed these for the library. I believe their board took a look recently at their existing policies, and a lot of them were just really, really old, fifteen to twenty years old, so they needed to be updated. Some of the changes are just adding still Memorial Library because that wasn't included in their policies. And then, for example, the, the laptop loan policy. At the time the policy went to effect, they didn't have many laptops, so it was pretty restrictive on the amount of hours somebody could use it and the amount, and the hours of the day. Since then, they have enough laptops for everybody to use them, so just updating it to make it less restrictive. Same thing with the small meeting room policy, just changing to accommodate how operations have, have changed since the early two thousands, so.
Any questions on that? The next item, number twelve, is a motion to approve change order number one for the executive jet port parking lot drainage improvements.
And I need to state that those who were at the pre-agenda, the amount of change was a minus fifty-one thousand change, and now it has become thirteen thousand, a minus, a credit of. So that was a change of thirty, a difference of about thirty-eight thousand, so.
Let me hear that again.
When we?
You want me to take it, Carol?
Carol. I've got it right here, so. So at the pre-agenda, what the jet port had presented to us was a change of a negative fifty-one thousand five ninety-nine, so basically a credit back to the contract for fifty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then he sent me something over the weekend that said that had changed. It was still a, a credit, but it was now thirteen thousand five ninety-nine.
What was the difference? What was the change to thirty-eight thousand dollar?
Now that I do not, he did not send me any information on that, but?
Um, Carol, the, the wrong unit price for the footage pay line item, whenever he calculated the change order, he used the wrong footings.
Okay.
Amount.
Got it.
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
So the wrong footage for the lot pipe or the?
The wrong unit price used for footings pay item, so.
Footings.
I think that was based upon stone backfill.
Right, yeah, that's, yeah, 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 yeah. I got you, yeah. I got it, I see it now.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
But I'm moving along, I know that.
Uh, County Managers Report, ne, uh, actually thirteen would be to cancel the April twenty-second public hearing for Project Istanbul and reschedule it for May sixth at nine thirty a.m. Then we'd have a County Managers Report, a Board of Commissioners Committee reports, and we can move into closed session. And then we, we will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting at the Health and Human Services Building at twelve p.m., and we'll adjourn from there.
Madam Chair, make sure we go into closed session four.
That would be to consult with your attorney to retain attorney-client privilege and to discuss matters relating to location or expansion of industries in the county.
Are we just raising our hands?
It should show.
Oh, okay. Well, mine ain't going to come up, do you know? Oh, it isn't?
Okay, it's eight thirty. We're going to convene the Board of Equalization and Review. You supposed to administer those?
Okay, if each of you will stand, place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. I'm going to read it. I just simply need you to state your name when I say that, so. All right. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Wayne County, North Carolina, that I will not allow my actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help me God.
All right, Mr. Speaker.
I will get y'all to sign these after.
Good morning.
Good morning. Boy, how y'all doing?
Fine, how are you all?
I'm good. In case y'all hadn't heard, we had a little thing called a reappraisal, a revaluation. I'm sure you've heard, everybody's heard. But I do want to say I'm very pleased with the turnout. I think we did a great job. Yes, stuff went up, but the market is there. I mean, just stuff has gone crazy in the market, and we had to reflect that, and we did a good job of it. I think our staff did a really good job. What's happens now, we actually sent notices out about three weeks ago, so they are out there now. We've been fielding calls. Nothing really crazy, though. We've answered a lot of questions. Taxpayers' main concern is their tax bills going up. We've tried to reassure them that you, as a board, and the city council members of the different municipalities will be working very closely with your budget teams and looking at it very hard, and will try to reduce the rate as much as possible to offset some of that increase. So we did, we are reassuring those of that, and I'm sure you will do that. There is room for some reduction in there, I'm sure, but how much, we don't know yet. So we've been trying to tell everyone, wants to know what their bill is going to be. We don't know that. But I think the theory is that their tax bills are going to double and triple based on what the value did, and we tried to reassure them that's not the case, that will not happen. So we've been trying to do that. What we're doing right now, we're receiving informal appeals. We're working those in our office. Right now, as of yesterday, we have roughly around 380 informal appeals, which is really low. I'm not asking for any more, but in comparison to the rebounds I've been through, this is my fifth one. So it's really lower, and I think it's probably due to more information availability out everywhere. I mean, you've got your Zillow, your ability.com, so people sort of can get an idea of what their house is worth. I mean, don't take our word for it. Look it up yourself. So I think it had a lot to do with our appeal numbers right now. It's still open. It'll be open through this weekend for the informals. And what we'll do then, we'll be working those. We will send second notices out for any kind of change or no change that we did on the property. And at that point, taxpayers will have the right to come to you as the Board of Equalization and Review to hear them.
You just going to send the ones on the informal reviews, you can send them.
Correct.
Free notes, not everybody.
Correct, yes, sir. Just the ones that appeal. They'll get a second reply. And at that point, they'll have instructions on there. If they still don't agree, then they'll come back to you as the Board of Equalization and Review to hear their appeal. We'll be setting those up probably in the next couple of months. I'm sure we'll have some. And we're going to adjourn the Board of Equalization and Review May twentieth. That's, we're going to adjourn that this board then. That is strictly just to stop accepting any appeals, so we can have a sort of finalize on that. If anybody comes after that, you can still hear them as Board of Commissioners, any appeals. So we won't have them all work by then, but we're basically having that date set to cut off the appeal time. Anybody not filed by then, will have to wait till next year to appeal. So that's just a cutoff date for that. But again, once we adjourn this board, you can still hear them as the Board of Commissioners later, and any later dates we set up on that. Any questions? Have y'all had some questions?
So on the appeal process, when you go back and reevaluate, there is a possibility that it could actually rise.
We've actually had that, yes. We've had several people turn in appraisals, or we had the data listed wrong, and their value may increase.
A increase instead of decrease, so sometimes.
It is. We've had some go up, some stay about the same, and some go down. So it's, it can be any of them. Once we revisit, we find an error, or it's somewhere requested. As an appraisal, we have to correct something, and it could go up, yes. That's correct.
Alan, what is some of the, why some of the property went up as high as it did, I mean?
People buying and selling property, Miss Acock. It's amazing. We try to do comparables within the area that the house is in, and it's just amazing. And I'm sure that that drills down to the cost of everything going up. I've been, personally, I've been surprised at the amount of sales that have been happening in the market with the interest rate going up like it did, but it didn't slow down a bit. People were still, you know, buying and selling properties like it's going out of style almost. It's just, we've seen a tremendous amount. And we're a little bit behind our neighbors to the west, Johnson County. They're, you know, it's just crazy over there because they had the Raleigh influence over there. But for Wayne County, I think we've done, I mean, it's just, Lenore County, they had a pretty good increase there, too. Dupont's doing theirs. Same thing. I'm hearing the same thing everywhere, really. It's just the increase, the market's just gone, and it does that periodically. And the market adjusts itself now and then, but we just happen to be on the upswing right now at this rebound. Back in two thousand eight and nine, when the market went down, people doing reappraisals, their values went down. Their overall values went down. So it just depends on timing and what the market's doing.
Some of it was where the county had it assessed at two hundred thousand a property, and people were selling for three hundred twenty-five.
Correct.
That's what triggered the reevaluation.
Correct.
Because it was over that fifteen.
It's such a drastic change in such a short amount of time, because that two hundred thousand was probably a good value back in twenty nineteen when we did it, but since then, it's just, it's just gone up so much.
And everybody's, I mean, depending on which way you look at it, nobody wants to pay more taxes, but your properties have appreciated in value.
Yeah, tell me about it.
It's been a very good, very good return on your investment. That's correct. I told some other, other day, I said, in our, in our position, our job doing a reappraisal, it's like the better job we do, the more we're not liked. And think about that. I mean, when we do a real good job, people don't like us too good, but I think we did a good job. So they suck at it.
Yeah, we can understand that.
That goes back to the Bible.
That's right.
I probably should have asked this question before I answered it. I've had numerous people call me on their values, and they questioned that value, and I simply told them that they could appeal that value. Am I correct there?
Yes, sir, correct.
And as such, I told them they would have to have some supporting documentation to support their perceived value, and the only source that I could think of was actually a real estate appraisal. Am I correct?
Well, that's true and not true. I don't want to encourage people to go out and spend four, five hundred dollars for an appraisal if they don't have to. I mean, if they have something wrong with the property, if they've looked on Zillow or looked on somewhere, or their neighbor sold their house for a different amount, and it's comparable to theirs. Stuff, we would accept stuff like that. It just opens it up back up for us to revisit it.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is one particular individual that called me on that and was just insisting, there's no way that his house could possibly be worth that. And I suggested that his only other recourse is to look again at Zillow. And if not, if he continued to insist upon that, would be an appraisal. He would have to have supporting documentation.
That's correct.
So he ordered an appraisal. And guess what came back? It's worth more than three thousand dollars of what his. So I'm encouraging people not to rush out and spend the five hundred dollars for an appraisal, because evidently your appraisal numbers are pretty accurate.
Well, thank you for that. I think, I think they are, too, but we're not perfect. There are some issues where we're looking at. Especially, we've had several people sending stuff in, and they've sent pictures. They've done a really good job of sending stuff of internal damage and stuff we would not have known about and stuff like that, so we're cleaning that stuff up. But we do get that percentage of people that just send it back, and when they ask their opinion of value, they put too high, or don't know, or can't afford to pay the taxes and stuff like that. So we do get our share of those as well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Another thing, Alan, on properties, especially in our area, there's a lot of property that, you know, would not perk. So the value of that, to me, would not be as high if the property would perk, you know, if you wanted to sell it.
Right. One thing we do, Miss Acock, and we have a lot of farm sales now that are actually going to developers to build. We don't try to look at a crystal ball and say, well, this might be potential development. We value what it is being used for. If it's farmland, it's being processed farmland. We're not saying, well, a developer might come out and pay twenty thousand dollars an acre for that piece of land. We don't try to speculate that, so we don't try to put that factor into it until, unless it actually does sell. Of course, then they just cut it up into a hundred lots, and we price the lots accordingly. But you're correct, yes, ma'am.
That brings up a point. So if farmland is deferred or residential value, and it's sold, if we're developing, is there a recourse on the tax?
What we do, if you're in the farm use program, we have a market value of the land, and then we have a defer, a farm use value, which those values are set by the state, and they're lower, lower dollar. That difference is called deferred. If that land gets sold and it comes out the production of farm, farm agriculture stuff and forestry, it comes out of that program, there is a rollback or a penalty. They go back four years on that deferred difference and tax you on that four years plus interest there. So there is a penalty, because it was put in place to encourage people to keep the family farm.
Well, that's, I wanted to bring that up just because some, a lot of people don't realize that, and they see a big dollar figure, and then all of a sudden, when it's all said and done, they didn't, they wish they'd have paid that.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Did I hear you correct to say you go back four years?
Four years, yes, sir. It's three years, current, 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 three years back. It's four total, yes, sir.
And generally, those costs are absorbed by the seller at closing, so they pay that out of, they settle up with the tax office at a closing.
They actually, a lot of times, they'll come and get a pre-estimate on how much that's going to be, and they'll go ahead and pay it like he says at closing.
It could also depend on if land changes hands amongst a family member.
That is true.
Or if it changes hands amongst someone that's not a family member.
In some cases, we have actually farm, farm-to-farm sales. And if that, in that case, as long as a new owner applies and qualifies, there is no rollback, as long as we continue the use of the agriculture, growing crops and forestry.
Sounds like that was speaking from experience.
Yes. And one last thing, and that is, could you give us a explanation regards to who establishes the value of farmland?
The farm, in the farm use program yesterday, that's, there is a farm use advisory board that comes up those rates, and it's adopted by the State Department of Revenue each year, and they put that out. And so there, it's done by the state. They send those to all the counties. It's based on soil type, but there is a cap on cleared land of twelve hundred dollars per acre. That's statewide. You can't, nobody can go over that in that program, and it goes down from there depending on the soil type and whether it's clear land versus forestry land.
You're wondering.
I thought you might be interested in this.
Farm use values. If you're in that program, the maximum you can pay on open land is twelve dollars per acre, as far as being taxed on.
So you're telling me the value, or you're talking about the tax?
The value. Twelve dollars per acre is what we can assess you on.
And that's the reason I wanted him to say that, because we were of the impression that it was sixty percent of value or fifty percent of value.
That's ninety percent.
But actually, the state cap's at, at twelve hundred dollars an acre.
And it goes down from there. That's the best land. It goes down from there. It's probably, I think it goes from twelve down to eight, maybe, and then six, and then forestry land would be even like in the three and four hundred range.
So this, so open land has got to be ten acres contiguous.
Ten acres or more in production.
And forestry is twenty?
Twenty, yes, sir, correct.
Contiguous, not.
Now, now, once you have a qualifying tract, it can bring in small tracts, but you have to have that, it has to be in the same ownership. There's a lot of different rules and stuff, yeah.
Yes, not different L L Cs, per se, got it.
Soil types is probably based on the last soil survey the state did, which I think is from the seventies.
It's a long time. Yes, we had this discussion earlier about that. Back then, it was based on tobacco production. Best tobacco land was the highest and best use.
Well, that's safety tanks, same, same land.
Madam Chair, if I can ask one question, because we were, this was pushed up, this reevaluation. Can you explain that process to them, why we were pushed up, and how many other counties are also in the same boat?
They got triggered. Back, probably five or six years ago, the state put in a, passed a new law that says counties, we do a sales ratio study every year. What that does is they send us a random sampling of sales in our county. We go look at that. We compare the selling price to our tax value. And as we do that, we do it every year, and if our sales ratio percentage drops below eighty-five or above a hundred and fifteen percent, it triggers a reappraisal that you must do in the next, within the next three years. And I think there were probably twenty-seven, twenty-eight counties that got triggered along with us back three years ago. So they're, they had to do a reappraisal as well. That's why you find now, a lot of counties are going to a shorter cycle. I know I saw in the news where Wake County is actually going, they just did one last year. They're going to do one in a three-year cycle, and then they're actually going to a two-year cycle, which is very aggressive, but they have the staff to do it. They have a permanent rebound staff that does that. I think a lot of people now, or a lot of counties, looking at a six or a four going forward, just so that it won't be such a drastic change from one time to another. But we were triggered, and we had to do it when the six years versus eight.
Am I correct in saying that if that assessed value property at two hundred thousand, if it sold for two thirty, which is fifteen percent over the hundred, it triggered it? So am I correct in saying that if that assessed value property at two hundred thousand, if it sold for two thirty, which is fifteen percent over the hundred, it triggered it?
Hmm.
Two thirty, fifty, as you say, a hundred and fifteen percent.
If it was just that one sale, yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just throwing that, I'm just throwing the number. So two thirty, so thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand would have triggered that one hundred and fifteen percent.
On that particular value, right, but it.
Not, not the three hundred twenty-five we just spoke of.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at. There's, that's that.
It's, it's what triggered. We, we were like, I think, we were like, uh, last year, we were, I want to say we were at fifty-some percent, maybe? Fifty, fifty-some percent of, of market as our last sales ratio that, as of last year. But the one that triggered it, I think, we, we, we got down like third year to about eighty-three, I think it was. That's what triggered it. We fell below eighty-five. But it, but it's looking at all sales, uh, agriculture, commercial, residential, it's got to be, it's that, but everything together. It's not looking at one particular type of property, but it's.
So all combined, commercial, industrial.
Everything.
Residential, farm, what, it was an average of fifty-two percent?
Correct.
Fifty-two percent increase across the scale.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Some were less, some were higher.
That's, that's exactly right.
Do you have any idea what the, um, cost of reappraisal is?
That's a good question. Um, we have, what we did here locally in our Wayne County, we actually did the residential in-house. We hired some part-time help to help us with that. We hired out the commercial because we have some oddities in the commercial and we don't have the expertise in our staff to do that. So we did hire the commercial out. Um, Angie, what, what is that budget? It's between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars probably. I'm just off the top of my head.
Well, and the reason I bring that up is do we need to possibly address, because I think we set aside a certain amount of that, a percentage of that over eight-year cycle.
Correct.
So the funds are there. Uh, do we need to address that in our budget process?
Yes.
Because it looks like we're going to be doing this in four years rather than eight years.
Well, that's, that's possible. But I was, um, talking with, um, thinking about that and, uh, you know, I would suggest probably as a right now, just my opinion, I would say let's shoot for a six this first time and then maybe gradually go to a four potentially. But Angie and I, we talked about in the, in our budget meetings about, and she is taking care, she's actually budgeting for six, just in case y'all decide to adopt that.
We got it covered.
How many fun are working?
Alan, I'm just, what you call the trigger, but, you know, it's, you know, by the state.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the generalized public know this? Because I got calls, well, y'all just spending and, you know, y'all need, why are you doing this again? And I mean, it's just unbelievable.
And we, we try to talk about it here in our meetings and stuff and it's in the newspaper, but probably not. I was, I was saying, I've, I've learned over the years that people hear some things they want to hear and sometimes they don't hear things and so.
But they think it's us because.
Yeah, it's, it's, you're out to get money. I, yeah, that's, that's usually, that's usually perception.
That's what I heard.
You just have to get revenue.
They don't understand that there's a general statute that requires all of this.
Exactly. Because believe me, I, I would not want to do this earlier if I did not have to. I mean, that is, it's not pleasant.
I have got one piece I'm going to come talk to you about.
Better hurry.
Alan, while you have maybe some attention of the public, would this be a good time to talk about the difference between the sales and use and, and the property value? Or you don't want to do that? Or maybe, maybe, because you guys are talking about trying to do the sales and use tax again.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, this bought me a good time to, to talk about that. Would you like to talk about that? Well, I like talking about that.
You, you mean our quarter cent sales tax?
Yes, yes.
Well, uh, again, you know, uh, it's, it's, it's much better, in my opinion, to share the burden of taxation by going with the sales tax. I think, uh, I think we've tried three or four times on this quarter cent sales tax. Um, and we would hope that at our next, uh, attempt at, uh, getting voter approval, that they would in fact approve the quarter cent sales tax. Because that does take a burden off of the property owners. Uh, so hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll talk more about that in the months ahead. But yeah, we're hoping that we can get that passed by Wayne County.
Fingers, fingers crossed. But you're, you're, you're correct. As a board, property tax is pretty much the only thing you can control to get revenue from. Uh, and so that will be less than that burden. It really would.
It would.
It really would.
Well, I had a person approach me, uh, yesterday, why we did not bring it back forth. And their comments, well, you need to do better about explaining it to the public. I said, we did, we did.
We had meetings, we had meetings, we had.
I mean, Ray Mayo, I, I mean, he, he tried, he did a fantastic job of trying to say it. He, I mean, he, he, he was diligent in working to try to get it done and it just, it, it still didn't pass.
I, I think it's just a perception of anything that has to do with tax. I mean, the word tax is just a turnoff for everybody. And if they can vote against the tax and they, you know, we, we, we did it. But I think it's the lesser of the evils if they, if you really think about it, dig down into it.
I think that's a good way of putting it, it's the lesser of two evils.
Exactly. Exactly.
I look at, I look at my change every time I buy stuff, but I ain't got a quarter of a penny back yet.
And that's what I told them too. I've not seen a penny you could divide into.
Well, thank you for the information. Yes.
Any more questions, Alan?
Madam Chair, I don't think anybody's here, but just ask if anybody's here to appeal, since you are sitting as the E N R.
Uh, is there anybody here that would like to appeal?
Presley County excluded.
We have none.
No.
Thank you, Alan, for everything you and your staff have done.
Thank you, sir.
And you said May twentieth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we would just recess the E N R board until May twentieth at eight thirty?
If, if by chance we do have any appeal between now and then, we would, we could schedule with Carol, but, um, I don't think we will, but we'll, we'll see.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we will recess.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Forster let me know that he was running into some difficulties and he'll be a little late today.
Uh, I make a question that we, um.
Yeah, we can just recess until nine o'clock.
Recession.
Good morning. I call April fifteenth board commissioners meeting to order. Imocation will be Commissioner Harrell.
Thank you. At this time, would you please bow your head and pray with me? Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this wonderful opportunity to gather here, Father, as a commission board and guests and friends and family here in this room today. God, I pray for protection upon all of us, your Lord, and blessings throughout this week. This holy week, God, as we begin to prepare for Easter and celebrate your wonderful birth and resurrection from the grave, Father. Father, I ask that you please bless us as commissioners, God, and grant us the wisdom that we need, Father, to carry out the business of Wayne County for the citizens of county so we can help better those around us, Lord, for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, Commissioner.
Please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a motion to approve the April first twenty twenty-five minutes?
So moved.
Motion on the floor to approve the minutes.
His phone's off. His phone's off.
All right, Commissioner.
We have one adjustment to the agenda, Madam Chair. Just add item number thirteen under consent to cancel the April twenty-second public hearing for Project Istanbul and reschedule that hearing for May the sixth at nine thirty a.m. That will be item number thirteen. That's the only change.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion until we approve the adjusted agenda for April fifteenth.
Motion on the floor to approve the adjusted agenda.
All right, thank you. We'll move into our special presentations. First item is our employee anniversary pins.
All right, I will call your names, and as you come up, please stand in front of the commissioner so we can get a picture afterwards. And I will begin with the one-year pins as soon as they're ready. All right, beginning with Jacob McInnes with the Maxwell Center. Joanna Rodriguez with the Detention Center. Angela McLeod Public Health Maternity Care Project. Lakee McCoy Smith Public Health Maternity Care Project. Ray Coburn Detention Center. Danny Grady Solid Waste. Michael McNeil Detention Center. Victoria Rouse School Resource Officer. Stephanie Hill Nine One One. Cassandra Merrill Detention Center. Christine Bridges Finance. Austin Tyler Nine One One. All right, that concludes our one-year recipients. All right, and for our five-year pin recipients, Jonathan Edwards EMS. Dawn Kappa Public Health Administration. Melissa Vasquez Detention Center. All right, that does it for our five-year pin recipients. All right, next, we have our ten-year pin recipients, beginning with Elizabeth Edwards EMS. Joseph Salz with the Sheriff's Office. Graham Price Animal Control. And Jonathan Griffin with the Sheriff's Office. And those are our ten-year pin recipients. And then moving on to our fifteen-year. Beginning with Brenna Wolf Public Health Administration. And Jessica Tillman EMS. And that concludes our fifteen-year. Last but not least, we have one twenty-five-year pin recipient, and that would be Chris Peeden with the Sheriff's Office. And if you will just kind of look up there at the camera and smile as soon as the commissioner stand up, and Joel will get a quick picture. He sends me a "Got it," and we are good. Thank you very much.
Ah, fast back applause.
All righty. Deal there. And number six is an introduction of our new Department of Social Services attorney, Gay Stanley. Leave that to Andrew.
Good morning. I wanted to schedule some time to introduce our new attorney for you all. When we learned that Mr. Parker was retiring, we had some hard discussions because there's not many attorneys in the state that's also your county attorney and your DSS attorney. So we were losing fifty years of that, and we met with Kim, met with Ginger, trying to decide the best course of action moving forward. Some counties hire a private firm, and there's pros to cons to that, but we explored our possibilities and what resources were out there. And Mr. Parker did some convincing and managed to recruit somebody. This is Ms. Gay Stanley. She has came from Green County. She was their county attorney and DSS attorney for a number of years. She lives here in Goldsboro. She's a Goldsboro native. She's been practicing law for about thirty years at this point. So between Mr. Parker and then me, we almost have fifty years. So combined, I think we've got it taken care of. But I want to introduce her to you. She's been working very hard. Obviously, there's a lot of knowledge that we're losing with Mr. Parker, and there's a heavy transition that's going through right now, and she's working hard with her staff. We do have one paralegal on already. We're advertising for a second one right now, so it will be a three-person staff, legal staff within DSS. She will be in the new Borden Parker building. She's going to see our office today for the first time at the ribbon cutting, so she'll be in the suite right next to Kim. But I wanted to give you an opportunity to meet her. A couple of months ago, she did come out to lunch with our chair vice chair, and then Dr. Harrell was also there, so the three of them have already met her, but just wanted to formally introduce her so you can put a name to her. And I'll let her speak if she wants to.
Just say hello, and I'm very happy to be here. I'm settling in well. I'm excited to see my new office. Like Andrew said, I've lived in Goldsboro since nineteen ninety-eight. I grew up in Warsaw Duplin County, so we had to come to Goldsboro to go shopping for school clothes and things like that, so it very much is home. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have, but again, I'm glad to be here. Nothing bad to say about Green County. It was a great place, but Wayne County is home.
We're just so happy to have you.
Thank you.
We're welcome. We're welcome here. We got a mutual friend that is called, and Mr. Parker thanks a lot of you too, so you're held to high standards now.
Those are big shoes to deal with. Thank you.
And I did leave out one part. The State Board has a specialized program where you can specialize, become a board certified expert in any particular area of law. And Ms. Stanley is a certified expert in child welfare law. So not only does she have thirty years of practice, but she certainly is qualified for DSS. And I'm thrilled we have somebody that's that accomplished in the area that can serve the Wayne County citizens.
Attorney Stanley, welcome.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure. We're glad you're here. You're going to have a great office. You're going to have a better office than our attorney. So we got to make sure he gets a newer office, but congratulations, and we're glad to have you here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, moving along to item number seven is a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five National Volunteer Appreciation Week proclamation as presented by United Way Executive Director Sherri Archibald.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good to see each of you. Thank you for this opportunity. I will share the proclamation. For North Carolina Wayne County, whereas a sense of caring and a desire to share have motivated many men and women to volunteer their time and services to the needs of others in Goldsboro and in Wayne County. Whereas volunteers help the sick, the needy, the disabled, and enrich our lives through the arts, recreation, and cultural activities. And whereas the County of Wayne has many dedicated volunteers who give their time and expertise on boards and committees that benefit our citizens. And whereas volunteer action is a powerful force for the solution of problems, and volunteers are increasingly recognized as an important partner with governmental agencies. And whereas volunteers have become an essential part of any prosperous community, and volunteer services help expand programs and stretch our tax dollars. And whereas Governor Josh Stein and the North Carolina Commission on Volunteerism and Community Service recognize volunteers across the state for their contributions to each one hundred counties, and the United Way of Wayne County will recognize those volunteers and all Wayne County volunteers tonight on April the fifteenth at five thirty at the Paramount Theater. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of April the twentieth through the twenty-sixth as National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Wayne County, and urges all citizens to recognize and thank our volunteers across the country and within Wayne County as we acknowledge the importance of our volunteers and take the time to officially thank them for all that they do. Adopted this day of the fifteenth of April twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-five National Volunteer Appreciation Week proclamation.
Motion on the floor to approve. Look forward to that night, Ms. Archer.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being there tonight, and I wanted to personally invite you all to join us as we recognize all Wayne County volunteers. The program starts at five thirty with reception in the lobby. At six o'clock, the program will move into the auditorium, and we should wrap up by six thirty, so I do invite you to join us. And if you don't mind, I would like to indulge just a moment of your time also to say thank you to the Wayne County employees, the County of Wayne employees, for their contribution for United Way of Wayne County in the twenty twenty-four campaign. During our presentation and our annual meeting, which was back in February, we had an opportunity to recognize many major investors who contribute to our campaign. And so we had the distinct opportunity to recognize the County of Wayne, and I wanted to, while we've already presented this, I wanted to bring it back and present it to share it with each of you in recognition of those county employees who are supporting their community through the United Way of Wayne County. So I wanted to share, if you don't mind, just a moment of what this recognition is about. I want to say thank you to Chip, Ginger, Megan Wilson, and Joy Allen. That leadership team met with a passion to increase support and create initiatives for their employees to get involved and engaged in the community. And so because of that, they were recognized for a Spirit of Wayne Award called the Innovator. And this award reflects efforts that are put forth by employers to impact lives and others through their investment. An innovative recipient will accomplish all five of these criteria. They approached the company's workplace campaign with innovation. Through their innovative process, they have increased the number of lives that they will make an impact on. Through their innovative process, they have increased the number of fair share investors. This combination increased the employee per capita investment, and finally, they went the extra mile to support the workplace campaign to reach their goal. So the County of Wayne increased their campaign by one hundred and thirty-five percent in twenty twenty-four over twenty twenty-three. They increased it to thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, with a capita of thirty-one dollars and four cents and eighty-two fair share investors, and they are impacting the lives of six hundred and forty-three community citizens. And so I wanted to acknowledge that once again and just say thank you to those employees and to the leadership and to each of you for acknowledging the work that they do in our community.
Could we stand up?
If I could ask Ginger and Chip to join, I would love to present this to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chip and Ginger.
Absolutely. Our pleasure. All righty, moving on to number eight, a motion to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, awarding a service weapon to Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver. And I'll ask Sheriff Peters to come up.
How about we're not going to let him quit?
Sir?
How about if we're not going to let him quit?
Well, he just keeps on working.
We both not let him retire.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, all right. Losing another one of my elders. But he's coming back, I think, part-time with us after he rests a little bit. I'll read this resolution, awarding the service weapon to Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver. Whereas Sergeant C.J. Weaver retired from the Wayne County of Wayne effective April first, twenty twenty-five, and whereas C.J. Weaver had been an employee of Wayne County Sheriff's Office and retired as a detective sergeant, whereas C.J. Weaver served eleven years with the Sheriff's Office in Wayne County, whereas throughout his years, he earned the admiration, respect, and friendship of those whom he worked and came into contact. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute twenty-one eighty-seven point two, hereby awards retired Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver his service weapon in exchange for a consideration of one dollar and awards him his badge. Now therefore, be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioner extends best wishes for many years of good health and happiness to C.J. Weaver during his retirement and his future endeavors. I'll ask if you could adopt that resolution.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution awarding the
With one exception, he cannot quit teaching bloodborne.
I've got my little helper over here.
Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver.
Motion on the floor to set.
So I've got a question. So when he comes back, does he get a new gun?
I have to carry my own when I come back.
All right, and we have a plaque here presented Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver in recognition and appreciation of years of loyal and dedicated service to Wayne County Sheriff's Office, June twenty-fourteenth, April twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. And your service weapon that you carried protecting the citizens of Wayne County, Detective Sergeant C.J. Weaver, for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career, your presence will be missed, but your accomplishments will not be forgotten. Congratulations.
Chairman, Detective Chairwoman.
Yeah, can't get out without saying a few words.
Several years ago, I had lunch with this man, and the first thing you want to know if I could work with Ralph Schroder. He was appointed at that time. I said, well, when you win in November, you need to keep him. He's one of the good ones. And the second thing I told him was, I wouldn't get him soon, and I wouldn't embarrass him. And that's what I've tried to do for a living. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity, and I appreciate my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to number nine, is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation as presented by DSS Social Work Program Manager, Samantha Nixon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, I'm excited to be here to present the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. I ask that my DSS colleagues, if they could stand as they serve at the forefront of prevention as it's been presented. Whereas in twenty twenty-four, Wayne County Department of Social Services received one thousand three hundred and thirty-two child protective services reports, with six hundred and sixty-four of those reports being accepted for an investigation or assessment. And whereas children are vital to our future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable and treasured assets. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a community response affecting both the current and future quality of life in a community. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, child development, and concrete resources, they need to cope with stress and ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created amongst citizens, human services agencies, board of commissioners, schools, faith communities, military installations, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business community. Therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, military personnel, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby providing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, adopted this fifteenth day of April. adopted this 15th day of April 2025.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the 2025 Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Y'all are to be commended. I mean, you know, a child's a child. There isn't a single one I'm asked to come into this world and for them to be, some of them be abused. And the work that y'all do to try to protect those children. I mean, y'all are a special group. You've got to be special to do what you do because I can't imagine some of the things that y'all see. But personally, as a commissioner, I just want to thank all of y'all for what you do.
Madam Chair, I am struck by the numbers. I think we all need to pause and hear those numbers again. There were 1,332 child protective service reports last year. 1,300, and there were 664 of those that had to be investigated. We can do better in Wayne County. We can do better. That has got to stop. Thank you.
And we appreciate everything you do, and God bless every one of you for what you do because I know it's got to be very stressful with the scenes that you witness and everything when you go in and find a child hurt or abused. I can't even imagine what you might see, but thank you, everyone of you. You're truly appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Nixon.
All righty. We'll move along now to the Appointment Committee.
Mr. Manager, Madam Chair, I'd like to make an announcement this morning. Effectively today, I am resigning from the Board of Trustees at Wayne Community College. With my deteriorating health, I just, I don't feel like I'm fulfilling my duties at the college. And so effectively today, I'm retiring, I'm resigning from the Board of Trustees at the college. And I'd like to, and the Appointment Committee met this morning, and I'd like to recommend, or the Board of, the Appointment Committee would like to appoint Commissioner Joe Doherty to finish out my term.
And that was in a formal motion?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, with that in mind, I think all owe a debt of gratitude to the service Wayne A. Cox owned as board. And I'll do my best to uphold your esteemed service on that board.
I thank it's been right at 10 years that I've served, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. But I'm missing several meetings, and I just feel like, I love Wayne County. I feel like I'm not fulfilling my duties on that board. And I know you'll do a good job. And the college has a great board right now. But I do appreciate you stepping up and helping me out.
Thank you. Madam Chair, additionally, we have a motion to reappoint Chad Matthews to the Wayne County Planning Board. And that's in the form of a motion. And that's all we have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the adjusted consent agenda.
A motion to approve this consent agenda with adjustments.
And Dave, I do need to see you just a minute before you leave.
Righty, moving along to the county managers' report. Just keep it brief. Those numbers are amazing and just so sad to hear that type of report. But those are special people, and they are special people to deal with that. I'm not sure that I can, I know I couldn't deal with it. But we can do better in Wayne County. We should do better. And it shouldn't be to that extent. And that's all my comments for managers. I'll turn it over to the Board of Commissioners Committee reports.
All right. Mr. Williams?
No comment.
No comment? Commissioner Doherty?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Aco?
Just a short one. And I did not resign from the Board of Trustees at the college because I wanted to. It's just the fact that it's time to move forward, and I feel like that action we took today that will be moving forward.
Settle.
Yes, ma'am.
No, no comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I had the opportunity to attend the Eastern Carolina Council Executive Committee last week in New Bern. Had a good meeting there, and Wade's board meets Thursday, so I'll be attending. Also, just want to wish you a happy Easter, Easter Sunday coming up. Please take some time to reflect on us Christians and our faith and your family and spend time with your loved ones. I'd also just like to extend a personal thank you to Smiths Chapel Volunteer Fire Department, the Granttham Volunteer Fire Department, and the Wayne County EMS. My uncle passed on March 21st, kind of unexpectedly. And it was very comforting to see your community there to support. So thank you to them.
Mr. Foss?
Yes, about a month ago, Ms. Ginger, Ms. Carol, and I attended opioid conference in Raleigh. And I forgot to speak on it, but you know, I learned a lot of different things there. Importance of Narcan, importance of lock boxes at houses with kids. I think we have someone in the community doing it. I would like to see that expanded. And also just the dangers of, you know, making sure that we started forming our kids of the dangers of opioids and, you know, what long-term, what happens. You know, I think it's kind of sort of overlooked a little bit with our kids because, you know, sometimes we just don't think, like, they won't do that. But, you know, sometimes it's peer pressure or just, oh, I think I can take this, and I'll be okay. And the next thing you know, it's a lot bigger of a problem. Also, I learned a lot about vaping, and that's something else that we need to really, really start looking at, like countywide, statewide, nationwide. It's dangerous, you know, and it's just my belief, you know what I mean? That it's very, very dangerous, and our kids, a lot of our kids are doing it. And, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen later on in life, you know? So just some things that I want us to, you know, continue to watch over and look at, and hopefully we can work on as a county. I apologize this morning for being late. I had some issues with a client. But other than that, that's it. Thank you.
I want to expand on that vape thing. That's, he brought up a valid point. That is something that you don't know what, you don't know what you're in taking. I still say, and I'm not condoning smoking, I did for many years, but I still say tobacco is safer than vaping. I may be wrong. I'm not a medical professional. But vaping is, there's possibilities to be able to do a whole lot of things that you shouldn't be doing with. And I'm 100% on board unless going after the vape stuff. I think we've had, all of us has had loved ones that's been affected by it. And that could be just as bad, if not worse, than some of this other stuff that we're dealing with, with opioids and things like that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, sir.
On my comment, I just wished everybody a happy Easter and remember what Easter's all about. I hope everybody has a safe holiday and everything. And we were recessed and reconvened.
We do need to go back and close session for one more item.
Close session, okay.
I'm going to go into closed session, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, we will recess the Commissioners meeting and reconvene at the Ring County Board of Commissioners meeting for the Morton Parker Health and Human Service building.